Julie.
Julie Coffin, 31 Hastings Street. I was wondering if you could explain to me what happens in front of our property as it relates to the roundabout? Is it something that we can go either way still? Go either to the left or to the right?
Your side of the driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, nothing would change.
So that, that mark in the middle is...
It's just green lines, it's not, it's not an island.
Okay. And is there some vehicle that the planning board can put in place? Or what is the vehicle for ensuring this water runoff? Because it is a major problem there. It's a major problem right now, before anybody's there.
Well, we're gonna have to have peer review done. The people we hire, I would, I would assume would come back with, you know, and Jeff handles a lot of it. I mean, well, they have an hot environmental impact too, but Jeff handles a lot of it somewhat.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll take a minute and elaborate on what, what my role is here. As a peer review consultant to the planning board, I'm, I've got to look at the civil, general civil engineering, which includes compliance with the zoning bylaw, the engineering issues associated with the zoning bylaw. I review the stormwater documentation and design that's put forward by the applicant to make, to ensure or comment on its consistency with standard practices in civil engineering with respect to modeling, pre-development runoff calculated for the project, as well as post-development, and stormwater management whereby water is temporarily impounded, infiltrated if possible, treated, and I compare the work to the Mass DEP Stormwater Handbook and comment on the consistency with the Stormwater Handbook. In other words, there's a certain set of rules, not published by the town of Menden, but published by Mass DEP that town of Menden, like other communities relies upon, and that's part of my review as well. And then lastly, general engineering comments. There could be things that, for any project, that might be concerning, or might catch my eye, or, or if something, I'm, I'm not going to design it, but I do have to comment on the validity of the engineering with respect to standard practices, and sometimes I will offer a comment if I say something you might want to consider, if there's another way to, to address something, so. And with respect to that, the review, Mr. Chairman, I did issue a letter earlier today. I don't expect this board will have looked at it for tonight's meeting, nor would I have expected the applicant's team to have reviewed it, but at least it's in the record as of now, and probably something that will be discussed at a future meeting.
Yeah, I got it late, and I skimmed it real quick, but I will, I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to look at it over the next few days, certainly before the next meeting.
Certainly, and I'll be prepared to, to answer any questions the board might have at the next meeting.
Julie, did you have something else?
Well, just a question. So that relates to like the infrastructure of the roadways? Does that also include, like what he's talking about, does that also include, once you start developing the specific site, and what happens with the water as you develop the site?
Well, he'll be, he'll be walking through the project as it's going along. He just doesn't do a peer review at the beginning and leaves it. He'll have inspections as they go along, and as long as they're, they're, you know, as long as they're doing what they claimed they were going to do, it should, should work out okay. Peter, could you hold on one second? I'm still answering your wife's question. So, you know, I mean, is there some magic winding wave to guarantee, you know, in the middle of the project, we could be hit with a 100-year storm and everything goes to crap? But we can't, we can't engineer, we can't, you know, life doesn't work that way. We've, we've got to do it to the best of the engineering we know, and hopefully everything works out.
But that's where I wonder if sometimes we had the larger lot zoning in order to kind of take care of some of this.
I think density is a whole different issue that the state's looking at right now. As a matter of fact, we may be dealing with future density issues with the town amendment, because most communities are going for smaller lots, and the state is pushing smaller lots. Go ahead, Peter. Grab the mic so the people on TV can hear.
As a specific follow-up to that, yes, standard practice is to do storm drain and the Board of Health, but I don't think it's standard prod, standard practice to do groundwater modeling. And I think that's the only way you're going to be able to answer the concerns of the neighbors as to whether that development has increased the flooding in my basement. And I don't know if that's appropriate, and what, and who would ask for that, whether that's a Board of Health ask, whether that's a Planning Board ask, I don't know. But that, that would be one way to assure people that, that larger concern is being addressed, which doesn't normally get addressed in your standard subdivision, if I'm not wrong, but.
It could decrease the water also. Good?
Nice.
Yeah, really. Yeah, it's, it's funny he says that, because in a lot of ways, that, there's an opportunity for that here. So, in terms of groundwater mounting, we're required to do a groundwater mounting analysis if we're proposing to infiltrate within a certain depth of groundwater. There's no state standard to do a site-wide groundwater analysis, but to the point of the, whoever was online said, you know, with this particular layout here, we're pushing all of the stormwater to the back of the site. So, everything on the commercial side up here, that's, that's paved and landscaped, is going to be collected in a closed system. All that gets pushed to the rear of the site, to this infiltration basin. Similarly, the residential development, the terrain all heads back towards the wetlands. That's the reason it's a wetland, right? Everything gets pushed away from the abutting properties. So we're actually pushing the placement of stormwater further away from the abutting developments, rather than pushing it closer to those developments.
Stormwater, I agree, but that's not what I'm very involved in.
Well, stormwater feeds to groundwater. They, they interplay.
Dan, any other questions, Julie?
I think so. The other question I have is, instead of a fence going up, could you have a live fence, you know, like actual trees or something, shrubbery on the backside?
Screening?
We're gonna do both. So, I, I know, I don't think this plan shows screening behind you, but we will do shrubs there too.
Uh, yeah.
It seems like they stopped there, but I had asked the landscape architect to go behind those buildings too, so we will get some screening shown on that. I didn't even realize until I just looked at that, that they didn't, he, she didn't put the screening there, but we will do, we'll do it, it'll be doubled. Everything will be doubled up. We'll have a fence, it'll be a slatted fence, so you can't see through it, or whatever we decide to do with you guys agreeing to it, and what we agreed to, and then we'll do shrubs, and none of these are small, they're not little five-foot shrubs, they're 12 to 16 feet high trees that'll go in right away. So you'll have screening right away. You're not going to have to wait 10 years to have screening.
His hands up on the screen. Oh, Brandon.
Brendan Schneid, 16 Washington Street, still speaking on behalf of myself, so not as likely. Yeah, so I have a few questions. The first thing, for the previous speaker, I also wanted to say that the full submission does include a planning schedule, including what trees are where and what size they are, so that, that was pretty informative for me. My question for Mr. Ninar is, the submission on the cover page indicates that the 20 Washington Street house would be either restored or recreated, but the plan that I see submitted do not include that plan. I'd like to ask you to comment on that.
So, I think what we plan on doing with the house at 20 Washington Street is moving it in, into one of these units, as one of these units along this road. We're showing the septic system where the house is now. It would probably move to this first unit, which is the first unit on the entrance to our development, so we would take that small ranch and move it right there and, and then rehab it.
Okay. If it's okay, I have a few other questions as well. The second question I have, speaking of screening fence, can you elaborate a little bit about the, the chain link fence with the vinyl slats, the green, the green fence that kind of looks like grass, or what are you talking about?
So, we were planning, I think we were planning on doing the black vinyl fence with the green screening, but if you guys don't like that, we're open to whatever you guys want to do there. Like, it's not set in stone. We just feel that that, once you plant trees either in front of that or behind that, it blends right in, you don't even notice that there's a fence there. When I first saw that, I didn't care for it, but once I see it with landscaping in front of it, it looks absolutely great, and you can't see through it at all.
Okay. Looked out to the rain. And one more question regarding the, the water peer review. Would that water peer review include a, a second independent perk test round, if necessary?
Um, you want to answer that?
Yeah, this is Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering. It's rare that that's necessary, but, but it's always possible. In reviewing with the Stormwater Handbook, there are some conservatively slow rates used that are standardized based upon deep hole testing, and oftentimes that's what's relied upon. But nevertheless, if there's questions or differences of opinion, there could be additional testing.
Okay. Thank you. Completely respect that, as a engineer myself.
Kathy.
Um, this, I'm going to, um, John, just, for the record, I think you mentioned my name a couple of times in our conversation that we don't have, so, the discussion that we had regarding the historic property is, would be handed by the Historic Commission. So I just wanted to mention that. And my question for you is, if we were, if this doesn't go through the way you've planned for it to go through, would you be willing to downsize the number of units? Is that something that you would consider? Because I know what you're trying to do is maximize the space, but sometimes the land is the determining, determining factor. Is it something that you would consider coming back and looking at something smaller?
Um, so, we're open to anything, Kathy, I'm gonna say that. We're open to everything. We, just for the cost of the project, we can't downsize to, to five units, but we would probably be open to, to talking about reducing some of the project size. I can't guarantee that, but we're open to discussion with everybody here. I'm trying to put that forward as best I can, that we are open to discussion with everyone. And just so Brandon can hear this, we do have to do additional testing out here, so we will be back doing testing again. You're welcome to observe it, if you would like, Brandon. We'll have the town Board of Health agent there, so I can give you a buzz or drop you an email when that gets scheduled, if you'd like to see the testing.
Well, if I'm correct, the town Board of Health agent has to be there.
Yeah, yeah, he does. But we do have, we do have to do more testing out there.
We're represented at the time that the perk test is being done.
Uh, we do have to do additional testing out there.
Okay.
If I, if I may add...
I'd be interested, just because I'm curious about everything.
Congratulations, too.
In response to Kathy's question about the density, one, one of the other things at play here is Mass DEP has required, through the public water system approval, that the residential component own that system. So, part of the density of this residential development is to support the long-term use of that public water system. They need to be able, the residential use needs to be able to upkeep that system, we're independent of the commercial use. They can't rely on the commercial properties to support that public system.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dan?
So, two questions. I guess first off, what you just said, so I assume though, the commercial users would be joining in, the residential users, contributing to costs, and that's just a fail safety, correct?
Correct, yes. The, the residential use would own and operate the public water system. They would then have an agreement with the commercial tenants to purchase water from the system. DEP's concern is, if the commercial use goes away for whatever reason, that the residential use can upkeep that system for the long term, so they can ensure they have adequate water supply.
I guess also, I can buy a hundred-two property. I had a question, if maybe it's not, who is the old center of that one responsible for the sunbathing? It's also just pointing out the main space.
What's at the center of the?
Center of the roundabout.
Oh, it's, it actually belongs to the state.
I guess my point is, that's not something I think the Congress has the capacity to take into its location, it may be kind of dangerous, so I'd like to see it either be hardscaped or turned over, or be some...
I'm sure we can have that conversation with the state, you know.
I can't hear the questions.
Oh, the question was regarding about the greenscape in the center of the rotary, and how we're going to address that. Unfortunately, we don't own, we, we won't own the rotary, so whatever the state applies to that, is what we're going to be left to deal with.
That's not the same.
Yeah.
I can, I can add to that a little bit. So, so the state does own, own the roundabout. They've looked at a variety of different options for that center island, and a lot of cases, it's hardscaped. The alternative to that is low-maintenance vegetation, doesn't need to be mowed, you know, 10 times a year, maybe once or twice a year, so natural low-growth vegetation is the alternative there. One thing I did, did want to mention that we didn't cover earlier related to the roundabout, right now, the state owns everything within the right-of-way. As part of this project with the proposed roundabout, there'll be a transfer of land from property that's on the 37 and 35 Hastings Street lot to the state to support the roundabout development.
Yes.
I guess the other thing I would add too, just, I guess for the record, I do generally support the idea here, I desperately need urban businesses in this town. I mean, I try to...
Just so everyone can hear it.
I mean, we desperately need commercial business, commercial revenue. I guess I would echo a previous speaker's comments, I would just want to see it done appropriately. So if there's a zoning issue, I think the planning board should recommend changes to the bylaws to bring back to town meeting. You know, the idea, if this is our commercial zone, it shouldn't be zoned 200 feet, that's seems to have a holdover from the past.
Yeah, and the board already talked about some of that stuff, we just haven't had an opportunity to, and I've talked to council, and we've talked to CMR PC, it, we're going to be working on the zoning bylaws. Our zoning bylaws are so out of date, that, I mean, we could literally be challenged on a lot of our rulings. The zoning in this town is, at this point, inadequate, and needs to be repaired. Um, you know, one of the, the state has changed a lot over the last year in Chapter 48, which, as everybody knows, is the governance of zoning, and they're looking for additional housing and economic opportunities. As, as planning chair in this town, I'm always looking for economic development. People don't understand what sometimes a commercial adds to a community, adds jobs. You know, people don't have to leave the town to get a job. A lot of our sons and daughters did work in these commercial industries that we have slowly attributed in town. You know, that's what commercial can do, if done right. We just have to make sure it's done right. We walk it through and, and make sure we dot our i's, cross our t's, and if the zoning doesn't fit now, we put it in front of the community, whether they want it or not. And, you know, we'll, we'll create zoning. I'm, I think Menden should add mixed-use zoning a long time ago, something we've been working on, and making sure when we write the zoning bylaw for it, we do it correctly. And, you know, those are things that if we can't fit the zoning to this project, then we may have to put it in front of town meeting and see if the people want. I mean, this is a community, and people have to decide what they want. Yes, Dan?
Dan, well, 40 Millville Street, if you need to involve the engineering, et cetera, that happens to the best of their ability, but the people in the area are still adversely impacted by what's going on, what goes in, is there, do they have any recourse?
Well, the, the question is, you know, I mean, we're going to study the heck out of this project. By the time we're done with it, we'll know what the, what the impacts are to the neighbors. And we certainly don't want to impact the current neighbors that are already there. I mean, some impact is always going to happen. I mean, whenever we build a house, whether it's, you know, all of us at one point or another have built a house in this town, or bought a house in this town. You know, for years, through the late 90s and 2000s, I mean, those of us who grew up here were shell-shocked by how many houses they added to this town. I mean, we went from a community of 2,500, at the, you know, in the late 90s, to 5, 6,000, you know, and, and the people who grew up here, but it wasn't all bad growth, and that's the thing. If you handle growth correctly, it's not all bad.
That wasn't my point.
Yeah.
If these people are adversely impacted, for instance, in my situation, where a little group of drivers come in, and the houses on Blackstone Street have come closer to Millville, et cetera, I'm like okie-dokie back there. Now, nobody can do anything about it, but, I mean, I used to be a driver, of course, it's back there, but they'd be up to their heart supply, so I'm just saying that if you have engineering, if you have good engineering, but these people have a recourse if, for instance, if you were a seller, they'll do more because of that.
Well, I mean, yeah, no, and I understand, I mean, there's always a, a component of, and he can answer this better than I, but from, from just community respect, there isn't, I don't think there's any crystal ball, but they're gonna, they're going to make the, you know, the alternative would be to shut down all building in town.
No.
But, I'm just saying, that, that, you know, if we didn't allow all the, you know, Vincent Road, or we didn't allow King Philip Drive, or we didn't allow all these subdivisions, and, you know, we can, we can play that, what we're going to do is we're going to engineer the heck out of this project and just make sure we've done our best, but can we wave a crystal ball and say that in 10 years, someone isn't going to have a problem? No, you know, things change on the ground, and there's nothing we can do. I mean, that's why we rely on engineering.
So, I know that everybody on Washington Street in that area already has water in their basement, has some pumps. I know that for a fact. And as Matt said, we are going to push all this drainage away from the existing houses on Washington Street, back to this wetland back here. That's the best we can do, is to try to do that, and hopefully it helps, rather than hinders, the houses on Long Washington Street that back up to the project.
And that already pitches down, right?
What?
If I remember correctly, that, that already pitches down.
Yeah, it already pitches this way and this way, so everything pitches to the back, so all our drainage is going to this big wetland, and this is a huge wetland area back here. All our drainage ends up in this huge wetland area in the back of the...
Yeah, it goes all the way over to your other project.
Yeah, it's a longish wetland area.
Um, that goes all the way over to your half-inch, half-inch air projects.
Yeah, yeah, it does, it goes all the way through. It's a huge wetland area.
Any other questions?
Well, I think just, right now, it sheds across 31 Hastings Street, the water does, so I don't know where the point goes, where the hot point is, but, you know, whenever the hot water cable's high, it goes from west to east, that's, that's how it flows.
This way.
Well, because you're all over the top of that grade, you, because your water comes down like mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, my water comes down the tacks.
The only thing we can do is keep our water heading away from you guys.
Yeah.
Because right now, I'm not sure that's how it is.
All the water's gone away from you.
Don't talk unless I ask you. When we engineered this for the three-house subdivision, that was one of the issues we were talking about, how they were going to bring the road up, because the thing pitched back, and all the water pitched back. So they had to elevate the road to be able to put the houses that were in there, in there. So I can tell you for sure that the water, that land pitches back. So, it'll end up more than likely in the wetland, because that's primarily when we did the three houses, the same thing came up in the engineering.
No. Somebody, somebody...
All right.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Kathy Hackenson, 25, Washington Street. That also leads to a question of, I know, a few years back, when a home was built on Washington Street, I would say they had to build up the lot at least three to four feet high. They brought in rock to build that lot up, so that they could put the home on it. Is that basically what you're going to have to do back there because of how wet it is? Are you really going to have to bring in a lot of fill to build up that area?
Right.
Yes.
So that doesn't, so that won't affect any other wetland laws, for bringing all that fill like that?
No.
No.
We're not, we're not in the...
Okay. So you've really got to build up that, that land, all of that? All that land you're going to build up? Three to four feet high? No?
It's, it's overall a fill site. So are you, are you concerned primarily about the residential, or just the whole project? Just want to make sure I focus.
Well, I'm really concerned about what's going to happen in my neighborhood, I guess, Washington Street.
Washington Street? Okay. So the site today, that we're talking about, comes back towards this wetland. The general grading through the residential is to try to maintain the existing where we can?
Maintain the existing level of what, what, what the level is now to the street, you mean?
Right, the existing elevation. Certainly, street-side, we're maintaining the existing elevation. As you work your way into the site, this back portion here is, is a fill site, so we're filling it a foot or two roughly, if you can count around here, in the backside here to support the development of this road. And then as you get off the road, it transitions back down to grading. So we're trying to minimize the amount of material we need to bring...
That you have to bring in?
To support the development. And one of the ways we're able to do that with this project is because we have dedicated spaces for, for water, which have taken public water from back and dedicated spaces for wastewater disposal. In your conventional development, you have wastewater disposals sprinkled on each lot, that then requires more fill material to be a shallow ground. So that's one of the benefits of having a centralized wastewater disposal system, is we can focus the fill at that area, and a lot of us can say, well, more consistent system here.
I mean, I just know that the poor guy that bought the house was picking out stone, the riprack stone like that, was coming up through the room that had been laid, just because he had to fill it, because of how high the water table was. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one point of clarification with respect to stormwater. There is a small portion of stormwater that will originate a few hun, anywhere from about 100 to 150, maybe 200 feet into the site, and head out toward Washington Street at both entrances. And in each case, there's a rain garden that's supposed to capture the runoff, and the, there's an outlet control structure connected from that to the drainage system in Washington Street. And they did use Washington Street as a point of analysis, if you will.
Okay.
But I wanted you to understand, there's a little bit going to Washington Street, likewise, there's a very little bit going to Hastings Street because of the topography.
You know what, you got to speak into the mic a little bit.
I was, I thought, can you hear me now?
There is no P A.
No P A. All right. There is a small portion of runoff that originates on the site and does work under Washington Street. The gentleman at the board is showing that. And likewise, it's a very small amount, very, down to Hastings Street. Rather than that, as they pointed out earlier, the majority of the stormwater is following the natural flow path, which goes down to the left, bottom-left of the sheet, through the stormwater system that they designed. Thank you.
Yeah, if there's no more questions, I'm going to look at a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'm making a motion to continue the...
2:13.
Is the applicant asking for a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we are.
Okay, sorry about that. Sorry, John.
Are you asking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to request a continuation till the next meeting.
Yeah.
Just thought I'd ask.
One question, are we going to make any ground by the next meeting, or?
So we got Jeff's letter today, we'll make ground on Jeff's letter, absolutely.
Okay.
You want to tell me what we need to do for more peer reviews?
Yeah, I'm gonna go over that. I'll probably discuss it with Jeff, and I'll discuss it with council. And then we'll set up those peer reviews and get this thing moving. And then we can decide what the next steps are from there. But why don't somebody make a motion?
June 13th to Quirka.
Today's?
23rd today.
So, I think we can get a lot of Jeff's comments done by June 13th. So, yeah, we may as well do that and get through that. Maybe we can bring some more renderings, or some pictures of fences and landscaping for you guys.
13, 7 o'clock.
And we'll just.
June 13th, okay?
Yeah, perfect.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to June 13th.
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. James? Yeah.
He fell asleep.
I think so. All right, well, we've got enough to set the next public hearing anyways. But if that's all, I need one more motion.
Billy's got a hand up.
Motion is ready. Oh, Brendan, please.
Brendan Schnell, 16 Washington, speaking on behalf of myself. Just a quick question. That letter that you're referring to, the opinion of the consultant engineer, is that going to be available publicly, if so, anywhere?
We can make it available publicly, I guess.
I couldn't understand the question.
He's looking to make your peer review public.
I was, I was on the record.
Yeah. I mean, we could have Gail email it to you.
Perfect. I just like reading everything.
Cindy's got her hand raised.
Yeah, Cindy, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Can't you put all the documentation that comes in online, so everyone can see everything?
What we?
Is that a possibility?
Yes, Dan can do that.
That would be great, so that everything we come.
That's something we should be doing for all applications.
I agree, so everyone's able to get it.
Absolutely.
I agree.
And the other thing is, I would really appreciate an opportunity to speak with the applicant's attorney, and hopefully, to discuss a couple of issues, so we can get some information from him. For the June 13th meeting?
Do you have your attorney's information? He's not available this week, Cindy, so.
Right.
It's mock, blah, I don't know if you know mock.
Well, you can give him my information. I would like to touch base with him before the 13th, in the interest of, you know, moving things forward and on parallel tracks.
Absolutely. We were hoping he was gonna attend this meeting, but he just had scheduled his vacation the same week of the first hearing. So, he'll be here at the next hearing.
Yeah, I know. How dare he?
I feel, there was no way I was saying, no, you can't go. I like my vacations. All right, thank you. I thanked the board.
Thank you, John.
Motion is done.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.